Well, thank you so much.
And if anyone has any questions for Rita, they can see her after the meeting.
If you have any questions after the meeting, we'll be able to talk to Ms. Rita, Ms. Jackson. Okay, Mr. Slagle, considerations for future discussion items?
Yes, next month, we will have the public safety update. In April, we've got some finance stuff coming up and some park things. Park, recreation, yeah.
And that will be the project updates?
Nothing.
All right, do I have a motion to join into the regular session? I think I need a five.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay.
Do you want me to roll call them out?
Roll call? Miller?
Yeah.
Nichols? Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
All right, moving forward. We have a motion to approve the minutes from February 10th.
So I'm in.
I'm sorry, we read the motion. Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
All right, moving right along, public hearings. Mr. Slagle?
Yes, Your Honor, the first public hearing is to rezone Oak Acres Plat 5, Oak Acres Plat 6, Oak Acres Plat 7. This was a request from property owners as well as developer. And the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed this case and made a recommendation. And to cover the details of the case, we will turn to Rita Jackson.
This public hearing concerns a request from Jack Creason, developer and owners of the property of Oak Acres Plat 5, 6, and 7 to rezone their property from C2 General Commercial to R1 Single Family District. Oak Acres Plat 5, 6, and 7 entails part of Redwood Drive and Ledwood Drive located south of Cunningham Road and east of Business 54.
Rita, one moment, please. We didn't have a motion to open the public hearing. We should have a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sorry for the interruption.
That's fine. The rezoning would allow for a residential neighborhood to remain a residential neighborhood and follow the city's comprehensive plan which outlines this area to be residential. City staff hosted us at a meeting in City Hall on Monday, January 13th, for the property owners of Oak Acres 5, 6, and 7 to discuss this rezoning. At that meeting, we had signature sheets which, if they were interested, they could actually sign at that time. Notices were sent to 43 surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the requested rezoning. City staff received one phone call from Shirley Bradley, who resides at 3799 Redwood Drive. Mrs. Bradley was in favor of the rezoning but was unable to attend the meeting, the Planning and zoning meeting that day. At the February 4th meeting, Planning and Zoning, the commission made a motion to recommend approval to City Council to grant the requested rezoning. Staff recommends that City Council proceed with the advertised public hearing.
Turn to the public, may I?
At this point, if there's any comments about the rezoning of Oak Acres Plat 5 and 6, 7?
So, I have a question. So, Oak Acres?
If you have a question, please come to the mic or, and you have up to three minutes.
I agree with your care. Do you know if those residents?
Please, we need your name. We need your name and address. Sorry.
Thomas Hugo, 205 East Jackson Street. Just wondering how those properties were thought of putting parks around them? Was it an issue of, because it's found as a family residence? If there was an option for those areas to keep, put in small parks instead of building development?
Well, actually, Oak Acres Plat 5, 6, and 7, they were actually developed back in 2003, 2006, and 2007. So they, actually, all we're doing is rezoning. So if they were interested in parks, they've been part of that plan when it was done back then and it was actually developed.
Any other questions?
I was just gonna say, so basically, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but somebody dropped the ball big time on this, I'm guessing, since we already have all these houses built. And it was commercial, not residential.
It was somehow overlooked, but we're glad at this point that, you know, we were able to pick it up and move forward.
Chris, in our zoning, it's kind of a tiered, so residential can be in those zones. And at one point, I'm sure when that was zoned out there, it was probably thought it was gonna be commercial. And then it's developed differently. And we've had other areas like this, and once it gets developed like this, and it's clearly, now you can see the intended direction of it, and it is consistent with the comp plan, so they've asked to have it basically fixed.
So in other words, you can build a family residence in a commercial area, but you can't put a commercial building on a family residence?
Right.
So all we're doing is bringing this down so there can't be any commercial.
Right.
Perfect. We need to just move into the next one?
Motion to close?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
We have another one that we have to, we're gonna have to reopen it.
Have to reopen it again?
Yeah.
I'll say it again.
Miller?
Yeah.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
I make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Slagle?
Yes, Your Honor, this public hearing is to rezone WC Barnes Block Lots 2 and 3. And this is brought forth by the trustee of the property and for potential reuse and to cover the rezoning request and public hearing, we'll turn once again to Rita Jackson.
Public hearing concerns a request from Bill Staley and I, trustee of the Mary Goddard Trust and the Frank Andrew Christer Trust to rezone the north portion of their property located at 927 East Liberty, which is basically the American Auto Parts Store. This property is currently split zone. The portion that faces Liberty Street is on C2 General Commercial, and the northern portion is on R3A, which is multifamily dwell. They're requesting to rezone this property plus two other parcels that are located to the north of that property, which faces East Promenade to C2 General Commercial. The two lots that face Promenade are R3A also. The Goddard and Christer Trust has entered into a contract with United Credit Union for the purchase of the real estate and the building. The building that currently houses the American Auto Parts Store will be demolished, and United Credit Union will construct a new branch office. The sale is contingent on this rezoning. In your packet, you receive a summary sheet outlining what the plans, what the United Credit Union's plans. Notices were sent to 34 surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the requested rezoning. City staff received no written or verbal communications regarding this rezoning. At the February 4th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, a motion was made to make a recommendation to City Council to grant approval of the requested rezoning. Staff recommends that Council proceed with the advertised public hearing. Tonight, in our audience, we have Eric Westhew, which will actually present for United Credit Union. And we do have United Credit Union staff in the audience if they have any questions.
Sorry, this isn't my laptop. I want to tell you go left or right.
We have an IT guy here that can help you.
I thought, I didn't think it said it when I read it.
Yeah, I thought, I thought everything was coming out of the green.
Well, maybe it's an exit.
I read that.
Good evening, sorry about that. My name is Eric Westhew. I'm an architect. I'm here on behalf of United Credit Union to explain our request and defend our awesome plan and answer any questions that you may have regarding how we got here and proceed. To begin with, we have looked at a lot of properties in Mexico for this new branch facility to be located. And this represents the most flexible in terms of the needs that United Credit Union has represented that they need at this facility. Their plan is to have 25 employees at this location, be able to serve 25 to 30 members at a time. And that obviously represents access, circulation, convenience, accessibility, drive-through lanes, ATMs. And one of the things that we've talked about is for the size of the facility, this footprint represents about 6,000 square foot footprint. We know that that will accommodate the insides, that we can adjust the layouts however we need to. But then, access into the site, access to the front door, access to the teller line, all of those things start to determine how we just preliminary layout the site. In this case, they were very clear to me that they wanted to have a parking lot across the entire front of the building that was closest to the front door for their members to have access. We also need circulation around the building for the drive-through lanes and the ATM, et cetera. And then, we evaluated the site with and without access to Promenade. Access with Promenade was the desired format, and one of the things that we discussed in the Planning and Zoning meeting was just the fact that Route J is coming in and there is a lot of other entities that are down Promenade that this level of traffic probably isn't going to interfere with driving up 200 or 300 more cars a day that are coming through there. I'm drawing out numbers, we haven't done a traffic study, but... That's the reason for the size, the shape of the lot, the access and the controls. We have, I think that you understand that the north part of the middle lot is what is currently zoned. The R3A multiple family dwellings, or multiple family dwelling district, as well as the two lots to the east and to the west of that. And I think from the overall site plan, you can see that those areas are kind of necessary to maintain a simple flow. The other very significant portion of this project is just the value. I'm not sure what the value of the property is, but I know from a construction standpoint, when you're developing an acre and a half lot, you're gonna spend $500,000 to $600,000. And when you're developing a 6,000 square foot building, you're gonna invest $900 million in terms of those developments. And this is a very significant development. It's very, you know, especially for an entity as grounded in the community as United Credit Union is, this is definitely gonna assist them in continuing to grow and be successful for the community as well. So as far as overviews go, that's about as much as I've got. If there's anything that I can help you understand about the drawings or diagrams or anything else, I'd be happy to do my best.
Looks like you've got four entryways into your property.
Yes.
Did I, did I get a memo that there wasn't gonna be entrances on Promenade?
But it does say that it was, that was when they, this was before they presented on February 4th, so he mentioned that during that conversation that it would be off. Look, you're correct, that's what it said in our brief.
And then, is this, is their entire operation moving here?
No.
No. So we'll still have, the regular building will still be in use?
That is correct.
Well, I for one am glad to see something happening with that property.
A minor aspect, I think, is that this has all been contingent upon the rezoning. So we haven't, we haven't driven into all of the programming requirements for this facility. There are thousands of variables that have to be evaluated and reevaluated, et cetera. When I look at this plan initially, I look, wow, that's a lot of paved parking area. Is that much necessary? And the reality is, it's probably not that much is technically necessary. It's on the plan as a representative to develop the site. But I would say there's probably 15 to 20 parking spaces that we'd probably take off of that as we move forward. But I don't know which corner there would likely be or anything like that. We do have a general sense of style that we're probably gonna be kind of a modern colonial look in terms of materials and the trims and everything that are related to the symmetry of the building. The architectural style has probably been defined, but I don't know how much of the budget will allow for how much intricacy we can incorporate into the building. The plan is for it to be brick. There's no reason that building in this town shouldn't be brick, so there's a lot of incentive to make this feel like it belongs in this community as well.
Any questions? Counsel? From the public? Seeing there's none, do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
All right. Now, thank you so much.
You see that arm stuff?
Thanks. Okay, thank you so much. Moving forward, ordinance to readings by title only and passage of bill number 2020-06, an ordinance to rezone Oak Acres Plat 5, Oak Acres Plat 6, Oak Acres Plat 7, and amending the district map referred to in section 42-205 of the Code of the City of Mexico, Missouri, zoning from C2 General Commercial District to R1 Single Family District. Mr. Slagle?
Yes, Your Honor, we had the public hearing earlier this evening, had, I don't think any additional comments at this point, so unless counsel has any questions, staff would recommend counsel proceed with the two readings by title only and passage of the attached ordinance, and this ordinance has been posted as required length of time.
I make a motion to read bill number 2020-06.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
You want me to read it?
Go ahead.
First reading, I'll read it. To rezone Oak Acres Plat 5, Oak Acres Plat 6, Oak Acres Plat 7. Am I in the right place?
No. Can you be reading?
You read it, you got it.
Bill number 2020-06, an ordinance to rezone Oak Acres Plat 5, Oak Acres Plat 6, Oak Acres Plat 7, and amend the district map referred to in section 42-205 of the Code of the City of Mexico, Missouri, zoning from C2 General Commercial District to R1 Single Family District. I move for the first reading of 2020-06.
Second.
Second reading.
Second read.
Second.
We're just all messed up tonight.
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do the second. To rezone Oak Acres Plat 5, Oak Acres Plat 6, Oak Acres Plat 7, and amending the district map referred to in section 42-205 of the Code of the City of Mexico, Missouri, from C2 General Commercial District to R1 Single Family District. I move for passage. Some music.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Now, bill number 2020-07, an ordinance to rezone the north portion of 927 East Liberty and two parcels located directly north of 927 East Liberty, from R3A Multiple Family District to C2 General Commercial District.
I make a motion to read bill number 2020-07.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bill number 2020-07, an ordinance rezoning WC Barnes Block 2 and 3, including the north half of the vacated alley to the south and that part of Lot 12 of City Survey 39, beginning at the northeast corner of Lot 12, south 137 feet, west 152 feet, north 137 feet, east 152 feet.
You only had to read that. By title only.
Oh, I make a motion to read the second title.
You wait. We're in trouble.
Well, it's all sitting right there. I was gonna do the whole thing.
Either way, you wish the abbreviated version or the full version.
I'll give you that. Okay.
I'm trying to say, and it's a long thing to read.
Has he read enough, I second?
I started to read a minute ago, that's a big, long one. Move for second reading by title only. Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bill number 2020-07, an ordinance to rezone north Providence portion of 927 East Liberty and two parcels located directly north of 927 East Liberty from R3A Multiple Family District to C2 General Commercial District, and move for passage of bill number 2020-07.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, resolutions by title only and passage. Bill number 2020-08, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract of obligation with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources regarding estimated post-closure expenditures for the City of Mexico sanitary landfill permit number 0100703. Mr. Slagle?
Yes, Your Honor, in 1998, the city closed its sanitary landfill, and following that, we had to do a post-closure requirement to cover any future expense at that main court. As a part of that, we had to do a financial assurance. To cover the details of the resolution, we'll turn to Roger Haynes.
As Bruce mentioned, we went into a landfill post-closure in 1998 for a 30-year period, which would expire in 2028, given all things go as planned. This year, the staff will submit an executed contract of obligation along with an updated financial assurance instrument to MDNR, noting that the potential post-closure cost estimate $118,048. As of September 30th, 2019, end of our last fiscal year, the city had $161,955 in the post-closure fund. Given the success of our post-closure funding mechanism and the healthy credit rating by Senate floors of LA minus, the city will be able to enter into, again, a contract of obligation without being directed to expend funds to purchase an insurance policy, naming the Missouri Department of Natural Resources as an additional insured for the estimated post-closure expenditures. Staff recommends to counsel to proceed with reading by title only and passage of the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a contract of obligation with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources.
Any questions?
What's longer do we have to do this?
2028. 2028.
2028.
We're almost there.
I'll be 80. I make a motion to read bill number 2020-08.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bill number 2020-08, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract obligation for the Missouri Department of Natural Resources regarding estimated post-closure expenditures for the City of Mexico sanitary landfill permit, sanitary landfill permit number 0100703. I move for passage of bill number 2020-08.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 2020-9, a resolution adopting residential refuse rates that's covering anticipated cost of sanitation services beginning April 1st, 2020. Mr. Slagle?
Yes, Your Honor, annually, we do have to look at our sanitation rates. We do have a contract with Danes Waste Disposal for picking up residential, and each year, we need to look at adjusting those rates to meet that contract needs, and we have to do that again this year. To cover the details of the ordinance and what is being projected, we'll, once again, Roger Haynes.
Each year, city staff provides the council a summary of projected costs associated with operating sanitation funds for the upcoming 12-month cycle beginning April 1st. Staff has taken into consideration annual unit pricing adjustments contained in the residential refuse services contract with Danes Waste Disposal and operating expenses related to all other city sanitation programs available to our residents. Staff provides the council this evening a base estimated annual expenditure summary for the sanitation fund totaling $625,610 for the 12-month period beginning April 1st, 2020, ending March 31st, 2021. To meet the funds' anticipated annual expenditures, fund equipment reserve, and maintain a fund balance compliant with our fund balance policy, staff is proposing a monthly service fee decrease of $0.34 per month for residents, equating to a 2.88% rate adjustment. In support of the fact that our proposed fee for service is reasonably priced, staff has provided the council a review of the sanitation rate survey of $50, and this penalty is covering approximately $100,000 radius. On the average, our proposal rate structure is $2.96 per month less on the base rate and $2.17 less per month based on the fuel-adjusted rate cap than the municipalities that were surveyed. Additionally, our program is more encompassing in total services as compared to several other municipalities surveyed, such as including residential brush processing, the household hazardous waste program, drop-off recycling, both a spring and fall cleanup, and two free appliance pickup events. Staff recommends that counsel approve the attached resolution setting the monthly residential refuse service base rate at $12.13 with a fuel cost adjusted rate cap of $12.92 for the 12-month period beginning April 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2021. Just as in order to reach the $12.92 rate cap, diesel fuel would have to hit $6.20 per gallon. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing there's none, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to read bill number 2020-09.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bill number 2020-09, a resolution adopting residential refuse rates covering sanitation services beginning April 1st, 2020. I move for passage of bill number 2020-09.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Onto other business, the staff report of purchasing a wide-area mower for Parks Maintenance. Mr. Slagle?
Yes, Your Honor, this is, purchase a wide-area mower for the Parks Maintenance Department. This is replacing a 2013 model with a number of hours on it. And to cover the details of the bid, we'll turn to Chad Schumaker.
Good evening. I apologize for my limited voice. The 2019-20 annual budget allows $54,000 for the purchase of a wide-area rotary mower for the Parks Maintenance Department. The Parks Department will trade in 2013 John Deere 1600 Turbo Wide Area Mower. Request for bids sent to 14 vendors and advertisements were placed in the Mexico Ledger and on the city's website. Bids were received from three vendors with turp works of his with the search. Bids were received from three vendors with Turf Works of Hazelwood, Missouri submitting the best bid. Staff recommends that council approve the purchase of the Jacobson HR600 Wide Area Mower from Turf Works of Hazelwood, Missouri for the bid price of $47,400, subject to the bidder's ability to deliver the mower in acceptable length of time. This is a new brand that we have not run before, but we have trialed these machines for a number of years. If you'll recall, they've been the high bid on pretty much every one of these we've done the last four cycles. Apparently, they want the business now. And this bid is significantly lower than what they bid this machine in the past, that's why it's the first time machine.
Okay. Now, can you tell us a little bit, just because I know, what was the difference between the one, I noticed like one of them didn't meet the specifications? What actually were we looking?
Doesn't meet specifications, it doesn't meet the width. It's a narrower machine. It doesn't meet the speed requirements. It's not a true zero turn. There's a couple other issues, but those are the big ones.
No, I was just...
It costs us more to operate it because it's not as wide.
Right, so it's just, it's not as wide.
Yeah.
What's the width difference, just that clear?
I think it's about six inches in between the tour and about eight inches in between this machine. So when you put the speed on top of that, it adds up to five better money over here on the turn.
What's the difference in the speed?
I'd have to give you that. I don't know if that matters, but it was significant.
Look, I'm just thinking that we'll probably have a couple of questions or people asking one of them, so I'll see you after.
Feel free. Give them myself a moment.
Okay, do I have a motion?
You first.
So, can I, Chad, do you feel good with this? Usually, I'm always about the lowest, but we're talking about a few hundred dollars difference. And we did this a few years back and got a mower and went with the lowest bid, and it turned into a disaster for us. So do you feel confident with this?
The last time they did that, it didn't meet sub-specifications, I remember that.
Yeah.
So that's why it didn't meet.
This is a, this is a high-quality commercial machine also. We have trialed them, we've run them side by side, and these two machines will both run somewhat equally, it's not quite as fast as the tour, but it's a little wider. So it comes out to be about the same machine. It also unfortunately has, it doesn't have a belt drive system. Each blade spindle has its own hydraulic motor. So the argument is that these machines will last significantly longer, and so we'll find out.
Okay, sounds good.
You did say that normally the Jacobson is the one that's usually come up the high bid to some houses.
Yeah, our last bid on this machine was probably, it was more than $10,000.
Gotcha.
So I was worried twice, so I'll just...
Okay. Motion?
I move that we purchased the wide-area rotary mower from Turf Works, Hazelwood, Missouri, Jacobson HR600 for, what is it, the bid price of $57,400.
$47,000.
Net cost $47,400.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams? Yes.
Okay. Now for, as for our business under other new business, will be staff report.
Don't we have to check to buy?
That's what I'm doing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Purchase of a two-door extended cab pickup truck from Community Development.
Yes, Your Honor, we had a budget for pickup for the, mid-sized pickup for the Community Development Department, and to cover the bids received and the amounts, we'll turn to Rita Jackson.
Bids were received January 29th for a two-door extended pickup for the Community Development Department. Bids were sent to six vendors that was also advertised in the Mexico Ledger and placed on the city's website. The following one bid was received from Pearl Motor Company for the two-door extended pickup in a bid price of $22,967. The 2019-20 annual budget allows $24,000 for the purchase of this vehicle for the Community Development Department. This vehicle will be used by the code enforcement position. Currently, that position has a 2006 Chevy Colorado pickup with approximately 91,000 miles. This vehicle will not be used as a trade-in. It will be utilized by our building and code specialist. Staff recommends that council approve the purchase of the two-door extended cab of Community Development Department in a bid price of $22,967, subject to the bidder's ability to deliver the equipment in an acceptable length of time.
I'm curious, I noticed there was just one bid on a pickup. You seem like you would have more than that, that's all that, that bid, really?
The amount is since then, vendors and advertised, and we only received one.
Two local people, too, one bid, one bid.
Car bids are done on a statewide basis, vehicle bids. Typically, you get the same plus, men get solid, can really bid, I'm just surprised, Pearl's can bid. I move that we purchase a two-door extended pickup for the Community Development Department in the amount of $22,967.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, now for the claims.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
All right, now for comments from the Council. Mr. Williams?
Yes, go first. Yeah, and that's why you switched seats, why not? First off, Street Department, Parks Department, good job keeping snow, you know, it just seems to keep coming, I don't know. And I hear tomorrow more, I don't know. So tell all the guys, good job, keep up the good work. The only question I have is, so I have a, a lady took me back to, had me come by her house, it's 802 or 808 East Monroe, there's a sewer line that's broke back there. And she said that the city's been out there, and they said that they would contact the owners, they said the line was the people behind her house. And then, that was several months ago, she said, and they were supposed to get back with their, and now they're telling her that, well, the people back there own the house and they're trying to sell the house now, so they have to disclose it and the new owners will fix it. And I'm like, but it's a sewer. She says, apparently it's a private line, but it's still a sewer coming up there. It seems like we should be able to do something, code enforcement or something. I mean, it's clear as day when I walked back there.
Matt Krailin's been working with the, I think there are two or three property owners that share a private line there, and he's been working on that. I haven't talked to him for a recent update, but I think the information is accurate that it is a private line, there is a collapse or blockage that we located that does need to be repaired. Two of the houses that are on it are empty right now, so there's no flow currently, but Matt does have an open case on that.
Anything else? That's good. Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
I want to congratulate Chad for his award. He received the congratulations, too, so.
Chad? I want to congratulate you too, Chad, thank you, Chris. That's all I have.
It's just like...
Yes, for those that don't know, that the State Parks and Rec Association honored Chad last Thursday evening, Chad Schumaker, our Park and Rec Director, with what they called the Emmy Award, which is the highest award given by their association for his work and dedication in parks and rec, not only for our community but for statewide. So we do congratulate him for being honored by his peers for his work in his profession.
So again, I'm going to say, congratulations to Chad, and again, thank you for all of what we've been doing with the snow and everything else. And that's all I'm going to say, because my voice is, I'm struggling too. At this time, we'll open it up for public comments. Any?
Yes.
Please stand, state your name and address.
Hi, this is Thomas Chigo, 205 East Jackson Street. I guess, Peter Williams, but the new, the new properties that could develop, that they're, that they're also available for low-income residents, and we're helping authorities that have been earmarked for those type of things.
Those are actually private owners that are building the new single-family dwellings. They're not housing authority in the current time. You know, we could probably get the information from the owners, you know, see if they're interested in, you know, what they're interested in. Lots of them are single-family homes which they are building for persons that have contacted them to build.
I figured they might be interested, because the health does determine, we're Section 8, and we do that individually, so it's a possibility. I know, I know, young families would like to get into a new home, so it would be a good thing for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Sanders, now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.